Call of the meeting to order Village Council for Union City, Ohio, October 21st, 2025. We'll open up with a word of prayer.
In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit and then guide us in our decisions with all people in mind for betterment of our community. God illuminate our minds and decisions at this meeting, amen. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Rise for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Shannon Tedrow.
Here.
Ron Raymer.
Here.
Eric Russ.
Here.
Eddie Lang.
Here.
Homer Stallman.
Present.
David Walkman.
Okay. Need a motion for consent of the agenda?
Make a motion.
Second.
Ron Raymer.
Yes.
Eric Russ.
Yep.
Eddie Lang.
Yeah.
Homer Stallman.
Yes.
Shannon Tedrow.
Yes.
Okay, I entertain a motion to excuse David Walkman.
Motion.
Eric Russ.
Yep.
Eddie Lang.
Yes.
Homer Stallman.
Yes.
Shannon Tedrow.
Yes.
Ron Raymer.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, this portion's reserved for village citizens. If you'd like to speak, just identify yourself and.
Brian Nunley, 219 North Cedar Street. I wasn't actually going to say anything about it, but I just wanted an update for the Oak Street property.
Okay. That's the one.
That's water. Because things are not getting any better. The landlord came in, cleaned up, but he has another pile. And now he's wrapping everything up. Perfect.
Is that the camper property?
Which I have.
Okay.
Yes, which I have pictures of.
So I will have to follow up with Kyle and the property owner to see exactly where that's at. The property owner was to get back with me as soon as the timeline was up for the eviction process and the subject was removed because we put forth an offer to help clean up the property. And I haven't come back from the property.
Okay, how long does it take through the courts to have someone make it? There is a time of process when you submit something that it has to be here in the courts.
The property owner has to.
Perpetual way over that.
The property owner has to do that, we cannot. The property owner did admit to me in my conversation with him that that process was skewed a little bit because he was running an LLC and he was switching it back to the sole proprietorship with his business. And that changes the rule evidently a little bit, so.
Okay, I'm not a lawyer, so.
I will follow up.
As far as the council, you guys can expedite this. I mean, it's in violation of the ordinance the way it is of having carpet or furniture out there. It's in the ordinance, I've already checked it.
That is something I'd have to have Steve look into. I don't know what we can do legally to expedite it.
Because it's, I mean. Because cameras out on my, by the alley. Facing that way. So yeah, now I'm concerned, I mean.
So we can follow up with the homeowner again tomorrow, correct Steve?
Yep.
Okay. See what we can do to push that along. Anything else? Dixie?
Hi.
Hi. Glad you're here. Okay, next up, project updates.
There's no news at this point. Where the application's been submitted to the USDA. The federal government shut down, so they're not working at the moment, so I have no updates.
Okay, administrative reports. See any committee reports? No ordinances and resolutions? Old business. The only thing I was going to add is just the four of you going off council to make sure you consider getting back on. We'll also be putting up. Since there was no one on the ballot, we'll be advertising that as well. But we can't officially, you can't officially put it on the website by the Board of Elections until after the election.
Cool business would be, where are we at on getting a lawyer?
You should have, did you include that in the packet agreement?
Oh, no, I did not.
We've had one response. From a Dart County law firm.
Is that from Haynes?
I believe so. Paul Wagner is interested in serving as our solicitor. He was Wayne Blake's solicitor and I believe Gettysburg. He's the only one that I've been able to have a conversation with.
Afford it to you guys right now?
And he sent a, basically a copy of the resolution that we would have to pass. In our conversation, he also did advise that he would not be able to represent us in anything criminal, which we don't deal really with that at all. Because he is one of the prosecutors for Dart County Children's Home, I believe. Civilly, there should be no problem or no conflicts of interest.
Can you get it delivered?
Huh?
I can't get the load in here. There it is.
We'll still, we'll still have to have a resolution though.
He's a fine standing gentleman, class of 1979 of Greenville Senior High School.
So there were two fine gentlemen?
We won't, Paul and I. And I was iffy.
Two twenty-five per hour.
Attended. Two twenty-five per hour for work.
Is that about the going rate, who's paying before?
I don't know what Chance's contract was, I've never seen it. I would say that based on what we're paying on the DM side.
Like 175 to 200, it was a net sale.
Yeah.
You don't say, I don't think you're going to get any cheaper.
No.
Yeah.
Say let's draw up paperwork so we can make things official with the next one.
My last invoice, Chance, when he came here to like tell us that he was leaving, that was like 250, so I mean, that was for now.
I mean, they got drive time, they got the person, vehicle, everything else, so.
Yep.
I would say put it together for no objections. They might not have any objections?
No, I don't. No objections.
We'll have that ready for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. You can notify them, let them know it's expected coming.
Will be.
Anything else under old business? New business. First up, UCO Fire Department, Roland Truck and Equipment Co.
General, that's a engine 9842, it's 1995. It's fairly serviceable, it's been a good engine pour, but it spits oil a lot. I don't know if you own a Harley Davidson, but it's got a Detroit diesel motor in it and they're kind of known for slobbering oil. This one now is up to about a gallon a week that we have to replace with great expenses. So Roland's is a reliable company, does a lot of work for fire departments. That's made of replacing all those seals or whatever out there. And while they're in there, they're going to replace the oil pump, which seems reasonable, while they got it all apart. So that's a complete seals and they said it shouldn't leak after that. My pay grade, so I need you all blessing to spend that time.
And this is just the parts?
That's parts and labor, that's part of it.
Okay.
It should be double sided.
Labor is the first item on 4455. Kind of misleading because it says fix the oil leak and get parts ordered for future repairs.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the diagnosis and everything. I mean, that was the work that we had to take it over there, they had to diagnose it, and now we have to take it back. It'll take them two to three days, whenever they have the job to do it, but. And it's operational, it just spits out a lot of oil.
It's obviously cheaper than a new truck.
A little.
So with this collaboration deal, so is the work that our maintenance cost on our trucks is on us and their maintenance cost is theirs?
It is.
Okay. And then, how many trucks do we still have on the Ohio side?
The Ohio side?
Yes.
You have three, count the grass truck.
I'm just curious to know. I'm just curious. Well, I know we got these two ambulances here. Do we have any that sit over there too? One?
You got one ambulance that can run a 911 width over there. The two transport ambulances, you have two fire trucks and the grass truck.
Okay. I was just curious to know because.
One's a tanker though, right?
It is, engine's like tanker, yeah.
I was just, people have asked.
Yeah.
And I didn't know, so I wanted to get clarification.
Yeah, we're down three fire apparatuses, this is a lot of effort and an ambulance.
Well, I guess I'll make the motion to make the repairs for $6,978.92.
Eddie Lang.
Yes.
Homer Stallman.
Yes.
Shannon Tedrow.
Yeah.
Ron Raymer.
Yes.
Eric Russ.
Yes.
Only one more on the truck usually. Did they tell you the mile, did they give? Usually a lot of these repair companies will put the mileage of the truck on here. I'm not seeing that.
Says zero miles.
Roughly how many miles we got still on this?
Oh God, I don't know.
I was just curious, because usually a lot of times, because my crane's in the shop right now where I work and their repair came over with the exact miles that's on that engine. So I was just curious.
I'll set my record up right here.
How many trucks are on your unit side yet?
Four hours. I think hours would be more important than miles.
Three.
You still got three fire trucks over there, two in the ladder?
A ladder and two engines, yeah.
So we're about equal, pretty close, other than that ladder's a little more.
I think we could actually get rid of one more unit collectively, but it's going to require a purchase. We can't just downsize, we have to replace a couple of things, trade two in for one kind of thing at some point, but we're getting there.
Eric, I really don't need to know the miles, I was just kind of curious because most repair shops include it and I was just wondering.
He just put zero.
That sounds reasonable.
For some reason, he just put zero, so it'd be something just for our knowledge to know where we're at for future.
Yeah, they got 250,000 miles on it. How many, you know, hours?
Hours, probably.
Super low miles.
Yeah, it's the hours.
Hours.
The hours are high because the motor's still running while it's running the pumps and all the hydraulic.
Not a big deal, just question.
That's something you should.
Moving on.
I don't need to know it, I was just curious.
Whenever they repair it, they can put it on there.
But the only reason I was asking, like, just keeping record of how much money we're putting in it, how many hours it's gone on it, and when does we hit that life expectancy of where we need to quit putting money in it?
It's a hard choice to make.
I know it's a hard choice to make, but it's questions that need to be asked.
Yeah.
Thirty-year-old trucks.
Yeah.
Because I don't know if I'm allowed to talk enough, I mean, because
Yeah.
um, he's saying the cost, and I understand that, but is it shared? Because I don't, I don't know how this works because we're all combined now. So if this truck rolls out for Indiana call, shouldn't this be split between both departments instead of Ohio side take care of?
Well, but if they roll their truck over, like, say they roll them trucks over here, it's kind of like that aspect of it, we're kind of like helping each, helping each other out.
Yeah, without getting too detailed about it, if the call is in Ohio, we respond, an Ohio engine as first in. And if it's in Indiana, we respond to Indiana in order to balance that out the best we can. Now, when one's out of service, like when this truck goes to repair for three or four days, our engine will be the first, be the only engine, but the job will get done. Now, we, they, they put the fuel in, you know, we, I put the fuel in the vehicles from whoever owns the vehicle pays for the maintenance, pays for the fuel in it and all that, we keep all that separate, but.
I think the main thing's going to be like on the collaboration, like, we keep our trucks, they keep their trucks.
Yeah, I want that on the last, so.
That's, only time's going to tell, and that's something that when we get to that bridge, we'll progress.
We gotta work that out, there's a lot of
Moving on. Okay. Next up, UCO Fire Department, Joe Hire. His letter of resignation is in front of you. Uh, it's just a formality, but.
Motion to accept.
Accept it.
Homer Stallman.
Yes.
Shannon Tedrow.
Yes.
Ron Raymer.
Yes.
Eric Russ.
Yes.
Eddie Lang.
Yes.
Okay. Next up, UCO Fire Department to hire Devon McKenna as a firefighter.
I took the following to your hire, part-time.
Any experience at all?
Just as a firefighter, currently in, so the fire department moved you in the city. I think he still needs some fire department, but since he lives here in town, he's already joined this department.
He's a level two firefighter also, so he already has his training. Make a motion to hire Devon McKenna.
Second.
Shannon Tedrow.
Yes.
Ron Raymer.
Yes.
Eric Russ.
Yes.
Eddie Lang.
Yes.
Homer Stallman.
Yes.
Okay, next up, UCO Fire Department to hire Michael Stolffus? Stolffus? As a firefighter, firefighter, paramedic. Same thing?
No, that's a.
Part-time, or is he full-time?
He would be a full-time hire to replace Joe Hire.
He was late. So on here it says he's got obvious background? So, huh? Okay, but that, then went on to get his GED, so where'd he get his, he entered his paramedic training? Yeah, it's through the school, I can ask, but the program a lot of people do for Indiana.
I think it was on the back. Read the email, there's his firefighter, too. Got his paramedic certificate.
Coming on full-time or going to?
Going to replace Joe.
Full-time.
Full-time.
Joe Hire was full-time. Short answer, we hired him a year ago, he fell, got hurt, he'd been on work comm for a year. They just cleared him and he said, I quit. Took a job somewhere else. So it worked out pretty good because this guy's hire certified, already got all the certs, and he wants a job, so.
Motion?
Second. You didn't say his name though.
To hire Michael Stolffus. You wanted to see if I'd mess it up?
Ron Raymer.
Yes.
Eric Russ. Eddie Lang.
Yes.
Homer Stallman.
Yes.
Shannon Tedrow.
Yes.
I remember I used to work for Stolz and Bird.
Okay. 124 Northwest Deerfield Road, Donad Grove.
So they were doing some foundation work. And the contractor had extra cement. So they've basically gone through and filled the potholes in that alleyway and requested if the council would consider giving them the credit on their water for the donation of the concrete to address the potholes in that alleyway. Did a fairly good job, we barricaded the alleyway off for a day. Set up, still needs to be sealed with the total patcher, which I think they were, it's on the list to do yet this year, so. But that's something that we can't answer, so.
Any idea how much they're thinking this is going to be worth?
They, they filled, I think, seven, I'm going to say moderately sized potholes. That were from the what's the, the street that ends into the grocery store? Drawn in blank. But for about one block in the alleyway, seven potholes.
Grocery store. I feel like if the contractor ordered too much concrete, that'd be on the contractor. We're talking about the alley behind the grocery store?
Yeah.
Yeah. They ordered too much concrete on the job, we gotta eat it.
Well, I look at it like this. When you order a concrete, you order what they say for the job.
You're paying for a full truck.
So it's already paid for.
The truck or not. They're okay either way.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's how I look at it. Because if I have a concrete show up and I tell them I need X yards, but I only use this many, I'm still paying for X yards because that's what I told them to bring.
They're, like I said, they're okay either way. I've just, they asked if I presented, so.
Okay. Everybody in agreement? I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, next up, the utility office policy and procedure. And I think that if we want to pass this, you would want to do it under a
Yeah, I don't think that's it.
It's just more or less just a discussion point.
Yeah, I didn't say enough for any objections.
I think everybody's had that for a few days to look it over.
I sent it like almost two weeks ago, Tuesday.
I guess we'll do both of them in the next meeting.
I'd say just proceed.
Okay.
I didn't see any issues when I read through it.
Yeah.
Read through it, so I'm good with what you've got drawn up.
I'll get it into the ordinance then.
Okay. If you would happen to, if anybody had happened to see anything, get it to Brittany right away. Otherwise, um, they're drawing up and into the next meeting possibly.
Well, just my suggestion, but say we get the lawyer on board, let them review it.
Yeah, we can do that too.
Then, once we get, we're back that we're meeting everything Ohio says that needs to be met, and it's right, then we pass the order.
That works.
But that's just my suggestion. Because it sounds like for years we've been operating under something that wasn't legally to standard. So to do it correctly, I think we need to get the lawyer on board next meeting, then send it over to him in the following meeting after he's had time to review it.
That works for me.
It's just my suggestion.
I told Steve I don't want to go to jail, so that's fine.
I don't want you to go there either.
Okay, emergency business or ordinances? Call the council, anything council member would like to add?
All right, bud.
Okay.
I, Homer Salmon, apologize for berating the police department October seventh. I apologize for not recognizing the workload. The police chief, Mark Hader, and fellow officers were working with. The police chief and the fellow officers did get concerns taken care of that I had requested. I do thank the police department and the officers for their excellent follow-up and investigation. That's it.
Nicely done.
Anybody else?
I don't have anything.
Just some questions like, when, like, you got, you gonna start scheduling the streets, the street sweepers to start hitting the, the leaves are starting to come down, that's why I'm asking. So can we start expecting that over the next week or two, start seeing that?
The leaf backs, I would say, will be out by next week.
By next week?
And the streets are getting swept every week, it just goes throughout the course of the week.
If I tell the wife to start parking in the driveway when I leave, would probably be a good call, so then get up to the curb.
I think that'd be a good call village-wide, because the street sweepers are running now and the leaf sweepers are doing pickups. If they've got a place to get their vehicles off the street in a driveway. I mean, down, down in Peppermint Village, I know there's a lot of driveways, but people don't use them, they'll park out in front of their house. So get them off the street as much as possible.
The more we can keep the curb clean, the better, hopefully our roads will last, because then leaves will just hold that ice and water and just make things get even worse. So.
Plus the water can drain to the storm sewers.
Exactly. So if we all do our part. Trick or treat again, was this Saturday coming up?
One fifth, trunk or treat is at five to seven, trick or treat in the neighborhood is at seven and nine.
Is there gonna be anything down at Rover Park?
Last, last, was it last year or the year before, they had trucks down there handing out candy, I believe.
I think it stretched all the way over there, didn't it?
Yeah.
You mean for the trunk or treat park?
Yeah.
I don't know who sets that up, I think Kelly was in there or something.
I remember passing out candy uptown and then going down to Rover Park just for a brief couple of minutes.
I think that's when we did the hay rides and we had hot dogs and stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think that was a couple of years back, I think that was.
Let me check it.
Okay. And then the city white is from seven to nine.
Turn your lights on on the porch.
Okay, communications and announcements, next council meeting, uh, November fourth?
Yep, it's Election Day also.
Yeah. And also November fourth, uh, public hearing for the park grant at six P.M., prior to the council meeting, so that'll start out.
Don't you have elections in here?
No.
The church.
The church.
The church still.
For now. Who knows, could be here.
We could offer it up as a service.
I don't know what's going on with that church, they're either like they're closing or.
Also, I end up being.
I saw that a lady cleaning there every morning.
Yeah.
See what?
A lady cleaning there every morning.
Okay, do we want an executive session? Do I have motion to adjourn or recess?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Eric Ross?
Yes.
Eddie Ling?
Yes.
Homer Stallman?
Yes.
Shannan Tedrow?
Yes.
Ron Raymer?
Yes.